Call the Tuesday, May 24th, Magnus and Joseph County Board of Commissioners to order. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance. Pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Moving on to opening reading of bids, there are no reports and requests. First item on the Board of Commissioners is the accounts payable docket. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second, Mr. Dieter, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. Fleming, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. Castelli, how do you vote?
Aye.
Motion carries. And we get to do some of the most enjoyable things as commissioners is recognizing the great things being done in our community by by great people. So the first is business of the month. Commissioner Dieter.
Thank you, the business of the month.
Drum roll.
A W Lee. In eighteen seventy-two, A W Lee pushes his cart around the streets of South Bend, offering his services as paint and direct decorating contractor. One customer at a time, one project at a time, A W slowly built his business and his reputation from the ground up. Civil War veteran, A W represented what is best about America. Assured drive and determination to create something virtually nothing to start at the bottom and dream big, to live on hope while striving for success. In nineteen oh eight, A W's son C E Lee incorporated the business, which by then had become a retail store. Doing so, he helped set the stage for what has become a family heritage, six generations.
Yes.
That's awesome. Nearly a century and a half later, we'd like to thank and think that both the businesses, A W and C E Lee, C E would proudly see that the business has survived several economic cycles, decor trends, and more importantly, has carried their legacy of integrity and honesty and perseverance. Over the years, how many stores have you had in the area?
Up to five.
There was one on Portage, right? There was one right up here across the street.
Sure, two fifteen, well, two fifteen, two twenty-five South Bend.
Okay.
And we had the one on Ironwood, one at Ireland Square Shopping Center, and then the one on Michigan Street.
Well, we really appreciate, I know somebody who shops there a lot too, so that's cool. But again, really appreciate what you've done for the city. We purchased, or I purchased a ladder from your Portage store in nineteen seventy-five. Mr. Castelli, to paint the house on Portage, so appreciate everything you all have done for the community. It's a very deserved award, but you guys have held the line for a long, long time in South Bend.
We certainly appreciate the recognition.
Give her a round of applause.
Do you want to do, what do you want to do, a picture up front right here?
Yeah, I don't know, we wanted to wait.
This would be good. Line up front here, in front of the cables here.
Yeah.
You left one person at work. Look at that. See his heart.
Thanks, Derek.
We appreciate it.
Congratulations.
On the front row here.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, my dad.
I think so, you guys look alike.
Want to talk about all the C E?
So I was the first C E since C E, and it was bobs and bells for a couple of generations, and I named all my kids C E, so. Cody's going to take it over.
Oh, that's fine, that's fine.
Thank you.
For your, if you'll enable me on the plaques when you see out there, and then at the end, or the beginning of next year, we get everybody together and pick a business.
Thanks, everyone. Congratulations. Thank you. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next up, we have our youth of the month. Commissioner Dieter.
Another drum roll, man. Makai, can you stand, please? Ay Martin is a young man who has faced a lot of adversity in his life at such a young age. He lost his older sister at the age of six. Through these difficulties, Makai went from being a straight A student to having a little trouble in school. Through his involvement in the Choices for Life program and his involvement with his church, he has made a big turnaround. Michael plays the keyboard, trumpet, and bass instruments. He is currently on the softball team. Is it softball, you're playing baseball, right?
Baseball, yeah.
Okay. He's currently at La Salle Academy in the seventh grade and serves as the usher for his church. Michael loves mentoring younger youth in the organization. Makai has also been to be responsible and consistent in putting his best effort forward. He's always maintained a positive attitude and shows consideration for others. He's an exceptional student and will be a big plus to the community in which he lives. He plans to attend Marion High School, and will be working on his baseball skills with me later this summer. Congratulations, young man. It's a good thing that everything you're doing, you have a great support system here, which you can see. So we really appreciate what you're doing and keep up the good work.
Would anyone of the many supporters like to say a few words?
I'm always a talker, so. I just want to thank the commissioners for having a program like this where we can honor the youth in our community. I think it will build up more students in our area to do great things, and being honored like this is just just something positive that they can look forward to. So we just want to thank you, and I just want to thank Makai for steady pushing forward, doing the most difficult time in his life, and continue to be a positive role model in our community.
Say anything, man? Come on up here, buddy.
You all wanted the picture?
Sure, y'all got to get a picture.
You want to kind of start it here, then in the standing room? You guys, why don't you stay where you are, and we'll just take the picture that way? And we'll have you.
Yeah, sure. Actually, get next to him, and I'll get him.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you all for being here.
Thank you for having us.
No problem. He's going to get that picture. See you when I see him, man.
Yeah, congratulations.
He's nimble.
You guys, thank you for coming.
Yeah, thank you for coming.
Nals and Rob from graduations to graduations.
All right, let's move on to the appointments of the Saint Joseph County Agricultural Advisory Board. I will now open nominations.
I only heard of Gordon Miller, is that?
Gordon Malar.
Oh, I'm sorry, Malar.
Redhead Turf Farms.
That's a recommendation that I've seen.
Okay. That a recommendation you're making?
Yes, is that okay? Yeah.
Second that.
Are there any other nominations?
I'd like to nominate someone, is that allowed? Can just a public sit, nominate someone?
Not in this format, but you could though, because we are looking for a couple of other individuals, but there are also some some strict, I'll say strict, but some guidelines after where they are. So let's let's chat after, because we are looking for two more people. Are there any of the nominations on the board? Hearing none, I will close nominations. All those in favor of appointing Gordon Malar to the agricultural advisory board, please signify by saying aye. Sorry. More habits. Commissioner Dieter, how do you vote? Commissioner Fleming, how do you vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Castelli, how do you vote? Aye. Motion passes. Yes, we are looking for for someone who is a KFO owner, and then someone who's a resident in the rural portion of the county who has no interest in farming. Those are the two more positions that that is, you know, state statute dictates how we fill that void. That's what we're looking for, Deborah. That would be great. Moving on to approval of hospital authority revenue bonds, series two thousand twenty-two, Okalon Psychiatric Center project. Mr. Mish.
This is similar to the memorial bond issuance that we did recently. The county has no financial obligation under these bonds. It's a statutory obligation that the county sign off on it for tax purposes. And I've had an opportunity to review it and also to discuss the bond issuance with Phil DeSenda. They intend to close later this week. They asked that this be taken up by the board today.
Any questions or comments from the board? Is there a motion?
Motion to approve the hospital authority revenue bonds.
Second, Mr. Dieter, how do you vote? Mr. Fleming, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. Castelli, how do you vote?
Aye.
Motion passes. Next, move on to corner approval of building purchase for Coroner sixteen twenty-two East Michoacan Avenue. This is a couple of words would be delightful.
We are looking forward to being able to purchase that building. At sixteen twenty-two East Michoacan, it meets all of our criteria. We are committed to not disrupt the neighborhood. We have very little expectations of any disruption there.
And this was a reminder to all, this was money that was appropriated by the Saint Joseph County Council with the intent of purchasing a facility for you.
Correct, we we looked at various buildings, and this one, again, met our needs. We were able to come in under our budget at a hundred and eighty-six thousand. We were budgeted for two hundred thousand. And so we will plan to use some of that money to enclose the back of the building.
Any questions or comments from the board?
I just have a comment about it. I just want to say, I think this is going to be a good place for you to be there. So, thank you. Glad that we're going to have a larger facility to help people.
You know, again, I'm a total approval of this. Again, it's been a long haul for what's happened, y'all working on basically a closet for decades and decades. So this is a big step up to serve everybody in Saint Joe County. I know, I think there'll be some public comments, and people had some questions. I don't think they were necessarily against it, they just wanted to ask a couple of questions, so.
Sure.
So I'm totally in favor of this process.
I guess, Council, what's the, continually we don't engage in conversation during public action on something, but we.
You as the president could decide to take public comment, we would still reserve it to three minutes, and it would not be a dialogue. It would be a take questions, take information, and then.
Get folks the answer, okay, later. It works for me. Is there anyone here, we'll start in the room. Is there anyone that has questions that we could take down and get answers for, folks?
I do.
Fire away.
I'm Pam Place, live at eleven oh six Bellevue. The coroner's potential building is right in our neighborhood. We were surprised by this. We only found out about it on May sixth. And as you can imagine, a neighborhood is freaking out at the idea of a morgue. And we met with Dr. Jordan, not that Friday, but shortly thereafter, like immediately thereafter. And she understands that our neighbors, some have questions about chemicals and traffic, and what's it going to look like? And I invited her to our next regularly scheduled meeting of June second, which is next Thursday. And so on behalf of our neighborhood, I asked that you table this until after our meeting, so that neighbors are able to hear from Dr. Jordan firsthand, like I am. Many neighbors are in support. We have one neighbor adamantly opposed. I don't know that he will change his mind. We have three or so people that have questions, so we're asking it to be tabled. And then in today's Tribune, it said this was something a little bit different, that there would be autopsies performed there.
No, that's that's what they were talking about as far as down the road. And I said we would entertain that potentially, but I told you to reproduce that is going to be just cause prohibitive.
So people will have questions because they see it in the paper. So we humbly ask for you tabling it a week and a half, or two weeks, for your, for two weeks from Tuesday, two weeks from today, so that our neighbors have a chance to hear. And for buy-in, our neighborhood is an active neighborhood. If a morgue joins there, they will be part of our neighborhood, and they will be on our crime alert list and our activity list, and so we humbly ask them.
Thank you. Any other public comments, folks in the room?
I don't see any neighbors on Zoom.
Or anyone of our friends on Zoom. Okay. Dr. Jordan, what is the timeframe from a?
We have a hand.
Ms. Heckman.
Hello, Cynthia Heckman Davis. I wanted to make a public comment later in the program, not specifically related to this issue.
Right, and we anxiously await your input. So, Dr. Jordan, as it relates to this, what's the timeframe from a purchase agreement? I know you've had other buildings that have been viable, but then we weren't able to act in timely enough fashion, and we lost those buildings. Where, what's the timeframe?
Well, I think they're looking forward to a positive vote today and have the wire funding tomorrow. That's the arrangement, that we would try to secure the building.
So does this put in jeopardy if we wait another week? Does it put in jeopardy?
I have not spoke to the seller, but I am looking forward to a positive vote today.
Because my concern is we've been closed before and not been able to pull the trigger, and then we've had buildings.
Yes, at least.
Our concern with a.
Name and.
Oh, I'm sorry, address for the. John Butler, project manager, I'll work for the corner on the fourth floor. Our primary concern in the delay of this is we would have to go back to the seller in order to ensure that they would be able to secure the building for longer. And at this point, we have lost the option for purchasing three fifth of buildings at this time due to delays in getting the funding. So that is what concerns.
And my concern also in this, if we, I think it's important, Dr. Jordan's already committed to sitting down with the neighbors and addressing questions, answering questions, planning, being moving forward, but I guess I think it makes sense for us to take action today in order to guarantee that we don't lose a fourth building.
Thank you.
Any questions or comments from the board? Is there a motion?
A motion to approve the purchase of the corner, for the corner.
Yeah, I was thinking that, I think it's, Dr. Jordan is going to meet with you people, because this is a technical thing, make sure that we can get the building done and all that process. But you can tell, she'll, any questions you have or concerns, she'll meet with you, so.
Well, we totally understand that. I think Dr. Leichter would be willing to do it, but, you know, the owner of the building, but I understand that you need to do that.
We got you, we got you.
Mr. Fleming, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. Castelli, how do you vote?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you, John and Dr. Jordan, for your efforts with this.
Thank you guys for coming.
Thank you.
Next, we have maintenance, approval of advertising and bid request for new roof on the Archives building. Brian.
Brian Davidson, building engineer for Saint Joseph County Office, is located in the basement of this building. Requesting, please. Requesting, please authorize the advertisement on the project on.
For having us.
Friday, May twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-two, and Friday, June third, twenty twenty-two, a mandatory pre-bid meeting will be held on Wednesday, June eighth, twenty twenty-two, with proposal submission date of Tuesday, June twenty-first of twenty twenty-two.
Any questions or comments?
So this is finally. Keel did something, who did all the original?
That was the architecture firm.
Okay, because there have been a couple of companies, so they will be able to bid out this stuff.
Correct.
Okay.
Any other questions or comments from the board? Is there a motion?
Motion to approve the bid request for the new roof on Archives building.
Second, Mr. Dieter, how do you vote? Mr. Fleming, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. Castelli, how do you vote?
Aye.
Thank you, Brian, for all your work with this. Moving on to infrastructure, planning, and growth, approval of advertising and bid request for community crossings, matching grant, maintenance, asphalt overlay.
Sky Matters, county here, office on the seven eleven floor of the building. What this is, is a request to advertise for our community crossings, matching grant, which is fifty fifty match of up to a million dollars we got from the state for, and that's for, maybe approximately eleven miles of road, we hope, depending on how the bids come in. We would want to advertise Friday, May twenty-seventh, and June third, with bids open through fourteen. We recommend your approval for advertising this bid request.
Any questions or comments from the board for Sky? Is there a motion?
Motion to approve advertising and bid requests.
Mr. Dieter, how do you vote? Mr. Fleming, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. Castelli, how do you vote?
Aye.
Motion passes. Next, rule of contract amendment for the two thousand twenty-one leaf collection and disposal contract. Mr. Mish, do you have any, I mean, we've had conversations.
This has been a negotiated deal. The contractor reached out. They would like to purchase additional equipment to provide better service to the county. They asked for an extension to the contract, which would help them with financing the equipment. We went back and forth, the county got a few items that we wanted in a modification to the contract. The contractor basically gave in pretty much everything that we asked for in exchange for the contract extension, so they can get the financing. So after taking a look at this, I believe all parties involved are okay, as any negotiation goes. Any other questions that we have to answer?
Are there in fact any questions for the board? Is there a motion?
Motion to approve this contract amendment.
Second.
Mr. Dieter, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. Fleming, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. Castelli, how do you vote?
Aye.
Motion passes. That moves us to old business, seeing none. Public comments, are there any public comments? We'll start with the folks in the room, and then we'll move on to Cynthia and anyone else.
Nate Caruso, three zero five Conference Street, New Carlisle. I just want to take this time to thank Derek Dieter for all he did in putting the motorcade together to recognize Wilbur Lawson in Mill Creek. I participated in the motorcade down Timothy Road across all that part of the country to Mr. Lawson's house. He was out in the driveway for.
Out in the sticks too.
Oh, my goodness, we went for it. I've driven on that road before, but it's been a while. But I was, thank you for the invitation, Derek. I was honored, and I, and a number of people from, there was, of course, Sheriff's Department of La Porte and Saint Joseph County, and I believe Elkhart were all represented there. A lot of Councilman Krasinski, Carl Baxmeyer was there. A lot of people came to show their friendship. Frank, Frank gave me a pin, thank you, Frank. I'm not wearing it though. All right. It was a very nice ceremony and a great job, Derek, thank you.
We should have a, Luke Pierce from Big Ideas came and did a documentary, so once we get that, we'll put it up on our county Facebook. When he was tearing up when Dr. Dieter was flying over, that was pretty cool with a couple of things, so.
Awesome, thank you, Dan. Any other public comments? Deborah.
Good morning. Thank you for your work again today. Deborah Droual, two one six seven seven, Mountain Road, South Bend. I'd like to read a couple of excerpts from the book Landscapes of the Soul by Robert Hemmer, who was put out several years ago by the Ave Maria Press. Unless we live our lives with at least some cosmological awareness, we risk collapsing into tiny worlds. For we can be fooled into thinking that our lives are past and political entities such as the state or nation, or that the bottom line concerns in life have to do with economic realities and consumer lifestyles. In truth, we live in the midst of immensities, and we are intrinsically woven into a great cosmic drama. It is not that our daily affairs and our economic and political concerns lack importance, but simply that unless their ultimate importance is viewed in light of this encompassing nature, our vision of reality will be shrunken. As I lie in bed at night, I sometimes imagine the ever-expanding circle within which I lie. I am here in my bed, in my house, with my family. As I hear the sound of a passing car or a distant freight train, I recall that I am a part of this midwestern town on the edge of a small city in the lee of Lake Michigan. I picture the earth as it is turning closer to the morning on its journey around the sun. And I see the planets revolving like the hands of a giant clock, majestic and powerful, yet just spent in this Milky Way galaxy, which is but one of millions. I feel peacefully at home and yet filled with longing. I am woven tightly into the fabric of the world, yet still a part of creation's brony. I am at one with the universe, yet still adrift in a great sea.
Thank you. Any other public comments from friends in the room? Name an address for the record, please.
Robbie Ray, seventy-eight fifty-six, East South Hudson, New Carlisle, Indiana. I thought we were, you guys were voting on the solar farm project today, did they get tabled?
You got tables, yes.
And then I can bring up stuff later.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, we should be, well, in theory, it's going to be next Tuesday, but. Anyone else in the room? All right, Cynthia.
Good morning. I'm Dr. Cynthia Heckman Davis at one twenty-five Gemini Lane, Walkerton. The Board of Commissioners will be appointing someone for the vacant spot on our county Board of Health. As a physician for many years in this county, since nineteen eighty-two, I'll let you do the math, I have a great interest in the health of our community. I have been attending Board of Health meetings as a part of my interest in health. I've noticed that one thing missing from our Board of Health is a nurse perspective. Any doctor will tell you that it's the nurses who really know what's going on. I have immense respect for those in the nursing profession. Anyone who has ever been hospitalized knows how wonderful it is to have an experienced nurse. Both inside and outside the hospital, nurses bring a wealth and depth of knowledge that is different from the knowledge physicians have, and that our Board of Health needs right now. Of the qualified candidates you have for the Board of Health position, at least two candidates have nursing degrees and years of direct experience with public health. With all due respect to Dr. Seal and Dr. Cootherd, and speaking as an M D myself, the last thing our Board of Health needs right now is another doctor. Our Board of Health needs the wisdom and perspective of an experienced. Our Board of Health needs the wisdom and perspective of an experienced nurse. I ask that the Commissioners appoint a nurse to the open Board of Health position. Thank you.
Thank you, Cynthia. Anyone else from Zoom like to comment? Hearing and seeing no one, a motion to recess is in order.
Mr. Dieter, how do you vote?
All right.
Mr. Fleming, how do you vote?
Aye.
Costelli, how do you vote?
Aye. We are recessed.